I heard it.
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting over. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
All right, thanks for coming, everybody. I think we're about to get some thunderboomer here, some rain. Looks like a line's coming through soon. Roll call, please.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Cindy Valentine here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristy Hilton here.
Crystal Regan.
Here.
Sandy Kufel.
Here.
Okay, we're all here, it sounds like. Bill's payable. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pay bills payable in the amount of $23,993.97.
Support.
Yeah, motion support. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the largely anticipated supervisors' report. And as most of my supervisors' reports since I can remember, what, four months or so, it started out with high water issues. Our water is falling. Yay. Actually, the Corps of Engineers is predicting about a five-inch drop in the water levels through September. And if, back in July, they estimated a four-inch drop in August, and it is pretty much right on the money. I know our last meeting in the middle of August, we were at 577.8, and I just checked about an hour ago, although it could change in 15 minutes. We're at 577.55. So it is going down, but don't let up your guard. And I basically had the same message at the last meeting a couple of weeks ago, and the very next day, or I should say night, we had what was called a meteor tsunami. And it was kind of weird. It was up by the state park, we actually had winds out of the northeast, but in New Baltimore, and for the, down by the southern part of the township, we had winds out of the southwest, so there was a little bit of a rotation. And New Baltimore, it was blowing about 60 miles an hour, and basically it blew the water in the bay across to our side with the wind, and also, we had a very low pressure, and that does affect water levels somewhat. It caused basically a mini tsunami, and the water levels went up, oh, I've, you know, estimated 13, 14 inches on Colony Drive and Anchor Bay Drive within 15 minutes. I mean, it was basically an inch and a minute, it went up, pretty good current with it, and it stayed high for about an hour or so, and then receded. It was a big mess down there. Many garages and boat houses got wet, a few homes unfortunately did get wet, and it pushed and moved things around, sandbags, water barriers. It was, it was pretty incredible. I know John, our DPW, our Water Department Manager, he was up till 3:00 a.m. babysitting it, and it was, it was pretty incredible. So like I said, don't, we're gonna have more wind events this fall, I guarantee you. We do have about five or six unclaimed 100-foot water diverter tubes, those yellow water tubes you see around. I believe they're $354 for a 100-footer. We do have a few of those left, so if you're interested in one, send me an email, and we'll get you going. We will be adding some stone to Crispin Road this week and on the island, and try to get that road reopened. The Vogues Road is still closed. Basically, I haven't, actually, I was gonna try to get down today, I wasn't able to. Last week, it was about still three, four inches over the road for a long ways. It's nothing that we really want to spend the money on stoning, but soon as the water gets down towards the end of this month, maybe we'll get that reopened. It's important to do it before duck hunting, at least, but we're definitely getting, keeping an eye on that. We have not heard from the governor's office yet to the, as to emergency declaration from her. We sent her a letter August 12th requesting it, and we, we need that signed, so we'll be able to get resources from the state and the federal levels. Without that being signed, we don't have much chance to get any help going forward, you know, from MDOT and different state agencies and federal. Harson's Island Ferry's got some issues on the mainland docks due to the high water. They had to put weight restrictions on the docks, basically till we, the new docks are put in. What's going on? The back of the docks, or the heels of the docks sits on the seawall, the seawall's put in the 40s, and underneath is being washed out, the bottom's being washed out, so the whole thing's dropping some. And then with the high water, they have to have it on an angle, such an angle, that, and they did fill, put stone on top of it, but when these heavy trucks drive onto it, it pushes the dock out, and the lower dock on the mainland side's definitely has big time issues. So they did put weight restrictions on it for 20,000 pounds, and, you know, that's gonna be there till they get some, a new dock built. I know they're working very hard on it, and given the ferry issues, I expedited a request from the Army Corps of Engineers. They, they do dredging every year, the head of Russell Island and the cutoff channels on, on the St. Clair River out by the lake, and they have this sand, and they normally dump it in Dickinson Island. Well, I requested them to drop off sand on Harson's Island and Russell's Island, and actually maybe on the mainland side too, for us to use for flood mitigation going forward. Have not really, well, actually, I did. They're making it hard. Number one, they won't do it until the governor signs the letter. And they're making it hard because they want all kinds of environmental impact studies of the dump sites and all this, so I'm not sure if it's gonna happen or not, but I'm trying my darndest to make it happen. Okay, non-high-water stuff. Wrapping up things with audit, last couple of weeks, I think most of the work's done on our side. We might have a few loose ends, and the auditors are going to put together our audit. I just want to briefly mention, I'm sure the chief will, we did have a FEMA audit on our last two, audit on our last two FEMA grants, and we passed with five stars. They did suggest we do a procurement policy, which is on our agenda tonight for future federal, you know, things we buy with federal funds. As you all know, we put out about 340 letters to the out islands as far as garbage pickup, telling them that we were going to suspend that and take the amount we're charging for garbage service off the taxes. I probably received maybe six, seven at the most phone calls of people that were upset about just continuing the service, and likewise, I got a lot of thank you, we don't pay for that service, and so truthfully, I thought we were gonna get a lot more people complaining about it. On Lug Island, I must say, I think we mentioned this in the beginning, it does work there. I've had talks where we, where we staged the dumpster at Taj Mu South, the marina. They're gonna put in an enclosed fence with a gate with a lock on it, and we'll have, we'll give the people on Lug Island a key. We're gonna keep it there and see if it works for them. We're gonna probably loop them in with the Russell Island people as far as what we charge for garbage service, and, I mean, we're talking to 15 houses there. So you met with OHM to, or, yes, to define the scope and the process of fixing our water sewer, our sewer interceptor, and we have more on that, and we'll be talking about it a little bit in our meeting tonight on the agenda. But good news, back in 2015, we applied for a SAW grant. What's it mean again? Sewer and storm water?
Storm water.
Asset.
Down.
Anyhow, we just called, we just called a SAW grant. It pays for a study of the sewer system anyhow. It was a $900,000 grant, and I just received an email today. It's probably gonna be funded, and the funds will be available in three or four months, and it will, perfect timing for this sewer interceptor problem that we're gonna be dealing with shortly.
Storm asset management.
Yeah, storm asset management. SAW grant.
That's the same.
Isn't the same?
There's something about wastewater.
Yeah, I think the storm.
S-A-W-W, I think.
Yeah.
Storm and, sewer and wastewater.
Okay, we'll go with that. Sewer and wastewater. SAW grant. All right. Colony Water Main Project, we're this close to being done. We did have some serious talks with the contractor about finishing it, and we're bringing another contractor to do the job. They did show up, I know they're there today, Friday, I think they showed up, and they're doing what we asked to be done. They're pulling the dirt away, the weeds, it's all landscaping issues mostly, bringing in about black dirt, seeding it, putting straw on it. I was down there today, it looks like they're doing a pretty decent job, and hopefully they'll probably be done with that at the end of this week. In other than that, I think there's a couple of small issues that we're working out, so pretty soon that, that should be going to bed. Oh, yeah, I was presented, or I should say, the DDA was presented a plaque for replacing the scoreboard at Elgnack High School. I went to a school board, and they gave me this plaque to, on behalf of the DDA, it's a nice plaque. The DDA paid $35,000 for a new scoreboard for the football field, and they got, or it was installed this week. I know Mitch Landrum, the athletic director, says it's an awesome scoreboard, is very happy, so that was cool. Been doing a lot of work the past week or two on the DNR Trust Fund Grant. In fact, I was, right before the meeting, I was doing some stuff with them. And also converting the defined contribution, the MERS program to a defined, or the defined benefit to a defined contribution plan with MERS. And there, once again, once we get the numbers together, we might look at, and we'll take to become 100% funded through a bond, we may look at doing that, and if it makes sense, we'll have some good numbers together on that. And, oh, I did, I actually, I applied, there's a DNR grant dealing with scrap tires, scrap tires, and we always do quite a bit of tires on our cleanup. What did we get, John? About 500?
Yeah.
I estimated, they, yeah, they, they said they'll pay up to, up to $2,000, but it's so much per tire, so I kind of estimated with their formula, it would be like $1,200. So it would, you know, if we get this grant, it'll be for next year, we'll have $1,200 towards our cleanup, which would be way cool. And there again, we got all kinds of parks and rec programs. If you're on Facebook, go to Township Parks and Rec and like it, or call our billing department for any of the details. We do have a scarecrow event coming, I believe it's October 28th. We have scarecrow contests, you make your own square crows, there's a DJ there, a pet contest, all kinds of games and activities for the kids. Great game. That's all I have. Thank you for bearing with me.
My pleasure.
Next, we have the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, public comments. I almost forgot. Do we have any public comments? No public comments. Moving right along, consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting of August 19th, 2019 minutes, with the correction that the board meeting took place at the Harson's Island Meeting Hall, and check reports.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have the fire chief report. Hey, George.
Good evening. I attended one meeting in the month of August, and that was a teleconference with the agencies involved and wrapped off. We put the final touches on that event, and so we could plan out what else we needed to get done before we had to go out there. I would also like to thank Mr. and Mrs. Paul Engel for the use of their property on South Channel. That was the medical staging area where we brought the patients in off the bay. Also, Mr. and Mrs. Tom Smith for allowing us to use their island for the command post, and Mr. Bobby Bryson for using his barge. This year, I think it was the best for our command post and our medical staging that we've had since I've been fire chief, and it worked out really well. We could gain access to the mainland a lot quicker, or to the mainland quicker, and then getting the patients that were injured to medical staging so they could get first aid treatment right away. So it worked out real well. We had seven calls for that event, nothing really major, so it was pretty, pretty mild. We, I did some interviews too. I have a couple of them here in the audience. I'd like to thank the DPW workers. They're working on the hydrants over on the island, kind of damming those up, the ones that are underwater.
Thank you, John.
And your group. And we also had a scheduled visit from FEMA, and there was a couple of things that she wants us to look at and put in our policies for purchasing equipment and stuff when we receive a grant from FEMA. So with that meeting, we also, she told me that we have about $2,300 left over from the grant for the ventilation system, and she advised us to spend it, or otherwise it goes back to the Treasury Department. So I did submit a request to purchase some other, some equipment for the system, their collars that go on the tailpipes, and some extra ones, so that's it. Thank you.
Any questions for the chief?
Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, unfinished business. We have none. New business. We have the procurement policy for federal funds. A great segue there, chief. So during that audit, she did, the lady did, that was out here, did say that, I mean, really, when we spend federal money, we should impose this policy, and basically, it tells us, or it says that, you know, we have to, you know, how we should reach out to small and minority business, women business enterprises, and a few things like that, and she gave us the wording, and that was in our packet. I mean, we did have a little bit, Cindy and I, and the chief was there with this person, we did have some discussion with, as well, you know, we got our wording, how we do things, actually, from the Michigan Township Association. She, that's okay for state and local things, but when you're, when you're spending, spending federal dollars, they'd like to see this in there, so. We told her we would. Do you have anything more to add?
No.
So was this created specifically for clay, or was this created by the federal government for townships in general?
Yes, second.
Okay.
It, it's not for townships, it's for anyone who's spending federal.
Federal funds?
Funds.
We would replace the XXX in XXX Township with clay.
Yes.
Thank you, Cindy.
You're welcome. With that, yeah, I'll make a motion to pass the procurement policy for federal funds, replacing the XXX in front of Township with clay.
Support.
Yeah, motion support. Any discussion?
Yeah, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't see any single source purchase agreements in there, or sole source purchase agreements in there. You know, basically, single source would be an emergency basis where we needed the equipment right away, and I think we did that at one time with John writing that, or a single source letter anyways, explaining why, and as a sole source purchase would be basically somebody that, or some company that only makes that particular piece of equipment that we need.
Right, and I don't know if we'd actually be using federal funds to make that type of a purchase either.
And this isn't to replace any of our bidding or quoting policies, that's just to go in addition to them when we're using federal funds, such as we get from FEMA for the ventilation, we're talking $1,000.
So if we, okay, so, so if we use this and that, then we can still, basically, on an internal memo, do a single source purchasing letter or something.
Right, and then she did say ultimately, it doesn't matter where we end up purchasing from, we don't have to explain to anybody why we picked, why we picked, but just as long as when we put it out for bid, it goes by their guidelines.
Right, but I'm saying, but not going out for bid. That's the difference.
Well, when you're talking federal grant with hundreds of thousands of dollars, it's supposed to go out for bid.
You have to, yeah. I even, I asked her, how do we know if a business is a minority or owned by a woman and stuff? And she said, well, you really don't, and you don't have to, just as long as you have the policy, you won't restrict them from bidding.
All right, well, I just wanted to bring that, I just wanted to bring that point up, and, you know, I don't want to see us go somewhere down the road, and all of a sudden, we get a piece of equipment in, or whatever it is, on a grant or not, and all of a sudden, well, why didn't you put it out for bid? So that may give us some degree of protection. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, any more discussion?
In our policy manual, under Financial, Chapter 2, or whatever it is, the, we need to sometime or another, look into bringing that back under new business, unfinished business, rather, and have a discussion for what we're gonna, when we're gonna vote on, or take an all-out discussion about our policy manual, because there's some issues that I still have that I'd like to talk with the whole board. And we put it on unfinished business and been sitting there because we've all been so busy with flooding and.
We could probably have a policy discussion and how we want to go forward with it at our next meeting.
That'll be fine. I mean, it doesn't have to be, you know, do our meeting or anything like that, it's just some thoughts on it, because for one person to read this whole thing.
Yeah.
Is a bit.
Oh, yeah.
It's a bit.
All right, well, we do have a motion and support on the procurement policy in front of this.
Chief, did you want to add something?
I just, what I, I have that lady's phone number, I can hear her call and ask her for a sole source, you know, advice on how she would like us to do a sole source, so we're covered for that.
If it does come up?
Yeah, if it does come up.
Okay.
And another thing, if you don't mind, to find this, this policy bids and quotes, it's right at the very last section of our policy manual, and so this would go in nicely right there.
Okay. And if they do make a change, we can always amend this really easily.
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be good, chief, if.
Thank you.
Yep.
Was the motion labeled as such to follow this to the letter? Or was the motion proposed to use this as a guideline? Can you restate the motion?
Well, it was to adopt the policy that was recommended from FEMA, specifically for.
Federal.
Federal funds.
And chief, during your discussions, is that what we were, you know, swayed to do? Is that what we were channeled to do, or was it to be used as a guideline?
It's to be used as a guideline to assist us in how we should do purchasing with federal funds.
Right, and there's various aspects in this purchase administration procedure that addresses each one of those guidelines.
And the bottom line is, we buy what's best for clay townships.
Yep. That's basically what this reflects.
Did we run this by our township attorney at all?
I did not. I mean, if you want, we can postpone it too, till we talk to her, and, I mean, if you want me to spend the money on the attorney, we can, but this is what we got from FEMA.
If we could.
They're the ones with the purse strings.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we're gonna know in a couple of weeks if we're getting a truck or not.
I mean, all of our policies are, guidelines are not written in stone, but.
Okay.
That's just what guides us to make the decisions we do.
I just want to ask some questions, so we don't put ourselves in a tight little trick box, that's all.
And this is designated specifically for federal funds, so it would be something that we would typically get as a grant from FEMA.
Yes.
And they're the ones that said, hey, you kind of need to have these guidelines, so.
So let me ask you this. If we find some wrongdoing in the purchase arrangements that we have, are we going to cite in violation of the policy, or in violation of the guidelines?
Depends on what the wrong, wrongdoings are.
It's a procurement policy for something that we procure federally. We have a pure, a policy in our policy book, but not for federal. This is just a federal thing.
Well, they should, they should basically mirror one another, except for maybe the grant wording in here.
Well, you just stick this in at the end behind ours.
Simple as that, huh?
Simple as that. Procurement, procurement policy, federal funds. The other one doesn't say anything about federal funds.
No, I'm in agreement, everything is in the policy, don't get me wrong. I mean, you know, I like it, but it's gotta be a policy, not a guideline.
But it would be.
I mean, anybody can write up guidelines. Who's gonna be held accountable to a guideline? Nobody.
So, Mark, what you're proposing is, is to make this policy. Is that what I'm hearing?
Certainly.
You're comfortable enough with the document in front of us, and read it enough?
From what I've read, well, about it, yeah, it's pretty, pretty tight.
Heavy reading.
Except for the, you know, what I brought up, what the chief is gonna check on.
Which is what the motion is on the table right now, correct?
I mean, if you look at the wording, excuse me, of this policy, it's to the extent possible, the majority of it, to the extent possible, and not to preclude, you know, so it's just, it is a policy, but it's a policy of guidelines of how we are going to do our bidding. When we, when we are acquiring federal funds from primarily FEMA. I mean, we can just relate it to FEMA if you put there, but that's really where we're the only place we get federal funds from.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it goes in bodying requirements. Yep.
Policy.
That's what it is.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, we do have a motion to adopt this. Like I say, our board, we can approve it. Okay, we do have a motion to adopt this, I say our board, we can approve it. If we want to postpone it until we get more information, we can reject this motion and do that with a different motion, or whatever we have. Do we have any more discussion?
I think we ought to put the two policies together, one we have in our book and this federal policy here, and, you know, combine them and make one reference to the federal and one federal referencing to the, our policy procedures, or something like that. Instead of just taking this, coming down from MTA or wherever we came down from, and saying, do this. I don't think we should just do this, just because they say so, let's go ahead and take a look at it, because it's our neck, not theirs.
Does our policy in our policy book reference anything about federal funds?
No.
No.
So, we provided her the policies that we have with relation to bidding and quotes, and she said, that's nice, but you're missing all of this that's in yellow. And then in her email, I think her recommendation was.
So if we approve this policy, it would only be for federal funds, what you're saying is primarily FEMA funds.
Correct.
Yes.
Which probably should be its own policy anyway, because federal funds are different animal than other funds.
Big time.
Yes, I agree with that.
So, do we have any more discussion? Remind the board again, if you want to come back, if you had a next meeting, you know, we can always, you know, make the motion to postpone it, but the motion on the floor is to accept this policy.
Well, if we did postpone it, who would take a look at this and give us some more insight to it?
Well, have to be Cindy, myself, or Chrissy, or.
Attorney?
And chief.
Attorney?
As attorney, I mean, if you want to get legal involved, you know.
Well, I think that'd probably be a wise decision, to me, I mean, you know, it's, if we want to postpone it, I'll leave that up to everybody else.
Chief, have we submitted an application for a grant for our fire trucks?
Yes, we have.
Uh-huh, and do we have any idea, the process in which they're at right now?
They just started releasing the grant funds, here, they're in the second round, I just noticed today, they're in the second round. So we should hear something this Friday, in the third round, there's like seven hundred million dollars that they're, they got to spend by the thirtieth of September. They're starting to release it.
They announce on Fridays, but usually someone in the governor's office or somebody will call already ahead of time, so we would know before it was released, but we haven't heard anything yet.
Is it reasonable to think that somebody from the federal level could be checking in on this policy?
That's what she did, that's who gave us the policy, because she was already out here, if you notice in her email.
But it wasn't in reference to the ventilation system?
Right, but if you notice in her email, we have to send her this being board approved, before she can close out our grant. So regardless, those highlights will need to be approved, whether or not we approve the whole policy, but what's highlighted in here, what we're missing, the federal government is requiring that we have to receive those federal funds.
I, yeah, I, we can always amend it.
Yep.
Can always rescind our decision, but if it any way, shape, or form can influence our ability to secure funds for a future fire truck?
Yeah, if you see it in her email, it says, some of the things in the policy don't apply to the AFG awards, which are the awards we're getting from FEMA, but they do apply with other federal awards, so she was just helping us to cover, in case of any type of federal funding, this is what you would need to have in place, either for our federal funds or some of these other types of federal funds. The majority of it cites, you know, laws and legal subsections, you know, with regards to what their funding policy is, you know, to give money. I don't, I don't think it's anything, and, yeah, we can continue to review it, there's some acts in here, equal opportunity act, Davis Bacon Act.
So, can you walk me through the process, and I don't want to belabor this, this point, but let's just say, for example, that we were eligible for a fire truck grant. So then the grant process, they get awarded, and now we come time to the bid process, right? So, now we have to follow this procedural issue in order to receive the grant, is what their recommendations are, right?
So, when she came out to audit.
Am I understanding that correctly?
She came out to audit everything, what we did from the second we were awarded the grant, how we went about getting our bids for it, how much the bids were, our bookkeeping to the grant, our follow-up, our reporting, right down to the auditors reviewing it at audit time, anything that had to do with that grant, she came out and reviewed. In addition, I had to pull our township policies, our procurement policies, our bidding policies, and overall, she said, you guys did great, she says, your work is awesome, you have everything you need, however, you don't have any of these sections in your policy that you will need to have for federal grants.
Going forward.
So if we'd like an A+ instead of an A, we should adopt the policy?
We can take this and just put it in behind the one we got in there, and if something comes up, like you say, we just change it. We just said amend it, amend stuff.
Well, on that note. We've been on speakerphone all this time.
I'm ready for a book. Dilly-dilly.
That was perfect.
So, I guess, I guess, so to make it real simple, do what Joanne said, however, we should have something in our corporate, or in our administration policy that says, any federal grants refer to the federal grant purchasing guideline.
Right.
Right, right in the index, you just put down.
Absolutely.
Right here, here's ours, here's this one, going right in behind it, simple.
Okay.
Okay.
Simple as that.
I still want to say, all in favor, say dilly-dilly. But we probably need a roll call on this, don't we?
Well, we want to make sure that we still go ahead and follow up with the chief on the sole.
Yep, oh, we will.
It's a single and a sole, there's two different things.
We'll have a policy discussion on our next meeting anyhow.
Cindy Valentine, yes, Artie Bryson?
Dilly-dilly.
Yes, say yes.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Crystal Reagan?
Yes.
Sandy Kupel?
Yes.
Mark Bichard?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, motion passes. That was an easy one. Oh, boy, dilly-dilly. All right, now for a much more important topic, we want to put some lettering on our township car. And I basically was gonna, myself, was just gonna say we put Township of Clay above the front tire, and, but, I don't know, does anyone have any?
I will say, I'm not a fan of the sunset circle there.
Yeah.
I, I, don't get me wrong, I like it, but I don't think it looks good on the car, if you make it smaller, so that it fits between the moldings, I think it's too small, and I think it's too big, and it overlaps the moldings, and I think it'll look funny and peel, so I think we should stay away from that.
What about just putting it on the back? Simple, that's it.
Well, but it overlaps the moldings here too, but, and you can't put it here because of the license plate.
I was just gonna omit the, the.
So, but.
Make it smaller.
And Township of Clay.
Just Township of Clay is, right, although I, yeah, I'd like to see a little bigger than that. Anybody else?
I like, I like what Artie said, Township of Clay.
Above the front tire?
Yeah, something, yeah, something on the fender, fender, when you pull up, you can, you know, and then if you wanted to do that, Township of Clay, and then just put the logo on the side of the car, on each side.
So, the lettering is forty-five dollars, if you want the sunset decal, it's a hundred and nine, I believe.
How many cars are we talking about?
Just one.
Just one, yeah.
Could we put it on, like, the rear window, the back window, could we just put, like, a.
Decal.
Right, Township of Clay.
I mean, the little sunset.
Oh, I like the sticker.
Well, if they can get one, somebody, you know, you can get them decals to where you can see out.
Yep.
So one-way decal.
But not in, so that you're not obscuring the view from the back, you put it on the back window, yeah.
Let's, we'll see if we can do that on the back window, and then we'll put Township of Clay above the front tires, that work for everybody?
So like in this example? Is that what we're looking at, the middle example?
Yeah.
I like it on the door.
I do too.
I like it on the door.
It doesn't really matter.
But I am concerned about it not lining up with those moldings, you know, if it starts to peel, it could be an issue, but I, I don't know, it's not really a big expense.
No, why not on the door?
Just put it on the door, on each door, not each door, but.
Well, each side.
Each side.
Okay, we'll put it on the door.
I like the, I like the wording above the fender, left, you know, the front fender, and then the, just, just, just the logo on each side of the car.
So you want the middle?
That's what I like, yeah, just, yeah, just.
The middle here and then the logo?
Even if you had to shrink it for some reason.
Shrink the logo, yeah.
Nothing on the back?
And Township of Clay in the back, just the wording of it by the license plate.
D or E?
And then put a.
Doesn't matter, are they the same?
And then put a big pizza sign on top that says.
So what are you suggesting, Mark, you're suggesting E, the one in the middle, and the logo on the door?
Yep.
Did I get that right?
Yep, and then on the back.
That's E.
E, right? Now, does the.
That's getting a little much, on the back and both sides and.
I don't think so.
Okay, Joanne, what would you suggest?
I mean, it's not gaudy.
Just put it on the door.
If you're gonna be driving on the road, you want people to know there's a township vehicle in front of you.
Put what on the door, Joanne?
Township of Clay.
Saying this one? Period, and leave it at that?
Yeah. Unless you want logos, you know, with Township of Clay under it, I mean, I.
I personally think the logo doesn't match this car.
It doesn't, yeah.
So that's what I was thinking, either go with like a black or a dark blue lettering with Township of Clay.
On the door, yeah.
That logo's on the door of that building department car that's out there, I, I don't like it.
It looks like a cop car too, we're not police.
Okay. I'm in for whatever you guys want, I'm not gonna fight anybody.
So we're gonna go Township of Clay on the door. Nothing on the back?
A little less obtrusive, you know, so they, oh, here comes, here comes the assessor.
Right, so what's the motion?
We're gonna go with, I think, C, the letter, Township of Clay on the door.
Support.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries. All right, Fire Department Ventilation Accessories, Chief wants to spend two thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars, and as you mentioned, this is leftover of our grant, that was, I think, for this, about a hundred and ten thousand, and we are okay to spend it, either we use it or lose it type thing, and.
I'll make a motion that we support and approve the Fire Department Ventilation Accessories expenditure of two thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars, coming from grant funds, is there an extra seventy-five there?
Extra seventy-one.
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one?
Seventy-one out of Georgia's budget, and twenty-three seventy-four from the grant.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries. Moving right along, we have a new hire, part-time Bradley Jones, chief, you wanna introduce Mr. Jones?
I'm requesting permission from the board to hire Brad Jones, he's a former resident of the township. He was on the department years ago, he moved to Georgia to take, he was hired by a full-time department down there, received a lot of his training down there, he is Fire One, Fire Two, EMT.
Excellent.
Has met.
Is that all recognized here in the states? Is that all states, is that recognized here in Michigan?
Yes, he's, yep, he's also national, or, what is it? National Pro Board, which is national certified, and a lot of his certifications.
Awesome. Are you living in Clay right now, or?
I just bought a house in Marysville, moved in over the weekend.
Oh, okay, so you had a long weekend.
It's ongoing.
Yes, I'm feeling, I'm doing the same thing, I feel your pain.
So you graduated from Elginak?
Yep, two thousand four.
Wow.
Muscat.
Joined, joined Clay Township in two thousand seven, left for Georgia in oh-nine, now ten years down there, moved my family back up here to be closer to family, my parents live in Clay.
Awesome.
So we moved back here for the summer and just bought a house in Marysville, so I work for Tri-Hospital EMS right now also, so just started with them when I moved up here, got back in contact with Chief Rose, so hoping to rejoin.
Perfect, anybody have any questions for Brad?
No, I'll make a motion to hire Bradley Jones for the Clay Township Fire Department, effective when? Immediately?
Support.
All right, motion of support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of hiring Mr. Bradley Jones, part-time Fire Department, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome aboard.
Congratulations, Bradley.
Next we have Fire Department New Hire, Part-Time Brian Cito?
Cito, he's not here.
Right.
So we'll have to put him off until the next board meeting.
Okay. Do you want to table him for now?
Table, if we can, please.
Postpone him, yep.
I'll make a motion to, well, I'll make a motion to table him, we can always put him on.
Yep.
Board?
Okay, we have a motion and support for tabling Brian Cito, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries. Next we have New Hire, Bradley Lawson.
Brian, I'm asking permission from the board to hire Bradley Lawson, he is Fire One, Fire Two, he's also an EMT, he has a associate's degree in fire science, so he'll be a great asset to the department.
I see he made the president's list at his college in Lansing.
Is that where you got your fire science degree from?
Yes.
In Lansing, was that, what college is that?
Lansing Community College.
You're still a Spartan fan though, aren't you?
Of course.
Better not say no. Is that for full-time or part-time?
Influencing.
Part-time.
Part-time.
Bring it on.
I'm good, Saturday night, seven o'clock.
I will make a motion to hire Bradley Lawson to the Clay Township Fire Department.
Part-time?
Part-time.
Support.
Yeah, motion support, any more questions for Bradley while we have him on the hot seat?
Yeah, are you in a neighborhood, or?
Living St. Clara, unfortunately, I graduated a saint, not a muskrat.
Oh, I guess we can overlook that, one occasion.
I appreciate that.
I do have a hard trouble.
What year did you graduate?
Twenty fifteen.
Did we beat you that year?
As long as you're a muskrat now.
All right, we have motion of support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of hiring Bradley Lawson, Spartan fan, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, congratulations.
Congratulations.
And thank you, both of you, welcome.
Yes, congratulations. Yes, congratulations, Brad and Brad.
Okay, next, as you know, we were having issues mostly down in the flats with people with putting out garbage in bags too early, but it doesn't make sense for them to, to, the, using garbage barrels or, or cans because a lot of these people leave on Fri- Saturday or Sunday and then their cans would be out all weekend, all week long and end up in the canals and, and ditches and, and sort. And I had discussion, you know, getting some type of a bin to put them in. And I actually had people actually give me quotes on building them, a chicken coop, chicken wire and, and two-by-fours and with hinges and, and other such designs. Actually, a friend, Lenny McCully, found this for me, sent me a link. She's used this company before. And it hinges from the top and from the front. So it's very accessible, each one, and it holds about ten to twelve bags. I'm estimating we need about twenty. Where we have a private drive where it services four or five people, I would probably put two or, or three or, or, I would just say three or more, we'll put one. If it's around four or five, I'd probably put two. And they can put their bags in, in here. It keeps the critters out and keeps it from blowing around in our beautiful waterways, all the garbage. See, I have a quote for twenty-four hundred dollars and we do have room in the garbage budget for this, either on miscellaneous and, heck, we had in the budget six thousand dollars for a container rental for the out aisles, which we aren't gonna have anymore either going forward.
So that'll offset this, right?
Yes.
So has anybody, are these very heavy? Are they heavy?
Yeah, they're fairly, they're, they're heavy, they'll, they're, they're galvanized. We, we pick them up, they, they, they come collapsed, but they, it's a really easy, takes fifteen minutes to put one together or less. And.
Are they gonna be painted orange?
No, I would just leave them as they are.
So nobody runs into them?
Right. I got, I, I do have permission from the county road to put these along the road, in, in the places and.
So it's gonna be signs on them or any signage?
We can put signs. I think it'll be self-explanatory down there.
Well, you know, I don't wanna see in the back of a pickup truck with a bunch of beagles in it.
Right.
Going out to the field hunting. So.
You gotta make sure they put garbage in it before they go out.
Is it gonna be anchored down?
Well, I don't, with the weight of them, I don't think they'll have to be anchored down.
Yeah, they are, they look pretty durable. And I don't think a hundred and twenty bucks is per, per.
No. The cheapest one I, the cheapest one I could find was around two seventy-five plus, you know? That's all this company does is, is they make bins for industry, industrial purposes. So I, like I say, I've been looking a little bit and.
Let's do a little preventive anchorage or something on them to where, you know, I don't know.
Well, if there's a problem, we can, we can definitely figure it out.
We can subsidize some of our orange sunset circles too.
Why talk to you?
This company's right here in Detroit too.
Yeah.
Are the residents of those private drives going to pay for these or just the township's paying for them?
I would say, well. The township would pay for me. If, if I tell all the residents they, they have to provide some, we're gonna have a whole hodgepodge of different things out there. And to me, I don't know, it kinda cheapens our, the way our streets look. And like I say, it's not a whole lot of money and I, I believe they look good. And I mean, there, there's someone has actually a big bird cage out there that they put their garbage in and, and other stuff.
I just don't see this making it through the winter.
They'd be all uniform. You know what? And I thought about that. We may wanna pull it for, for snow season, for, for when the snowplow goes down there.
Well, not only that, but you know, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna fill up with snow or whatever, or, you know.
Yeah.
I know it's got holes in it, but.
Well, we'd stack them in the back of the water station where we store everything.
Why don't we just, can, can we just order a couple of them and see how they stand up?
I mean, we can. They, they, they're the same cost, you know, if I buy one or two or twenty, they're a hundred and twenty dollars apiece.
Are those wheels on the bottom or are those?
No, they're like legs.
How does this, as a board, how does this differ than the hydro dams that people were, had to purchase for five hundred bucks? How, how, and how is the purchase any different? Protecting their garbage versus protecting, you know, other people's property? I'm just, I, I love the idea, love it. But you think we'd get a bunch of resistance if, if, if we purchased them and then, and then, you know, prorated it and charged them ten bucks a month or something till they got paid off?
How, what vehicle are you gonna use to charge them? I mean, that's a special assessment. You're going to, I mean, our cost to do a special assessment would probably outweigh the, the cost of these.
You mean admin and getting it together?
Yep, and you'd have to, you know, they, they have to agree upon it or, you know, a certain amount and, I mean, I can see Sherri like freaking out in the, in, in the background right now without even looking.
Just a thought, if, if we identify the residents that are, would be useful, then why don't we ask them if they would be willing to? Here's, here they are, they're available for purchase between you and three other residents and it'll solve your problem of trash all over the road.
There's gonna be those though that will not wanna participate and then what do we do?
Right.
Then that defeats the purpose of the uniformity and.
That's true.
There's gotta be some responsibility on the people that live on those roads to make sure that their trash isn't all over the road. And I understand that we don't wanna stage our code enforcer down there all day to babysit trash. But maybe that's what we need to do.
So you want our code enforcer to go out Sunday night?
Maybe.
And one, one street won't, won't be violating one weekend, but the next weekend they will be.
Well, we can't micromanage everybody. You would just think that people would wanna do the right thing and be good people and pick up their own garbage and, you know, so maybe we just need to be a little bit more.
Tough.
Aware of the situation. Send them letters and have our code enforcer, whatever it takes. Sooner or later, somebody's got, they have to be responsible for their own garbage.
Let's run a test run. Throw a couple bucks at it. Let's run a test run. Let's pick a couple of streets that may be the worst, you know, areas. Let's run a test. Let's see how they hold up for a couple months. See if people use them. Let's see if they don't use them.
But then, are we gonna pay for the rest of them or? I, I don't know why we would pay. I mean, this is just like a, a garbage can, I think.
Yeah, basically.
And they got the free bin before.
People go away for the weekend all over the township and on back roads and that doesn't mean that we're gonna go out and buy them one because they leave on a Friday and they wanna leave their garbage out.
We, we have a, a, a unique problem on this part of the island and I'm just looking for a solution. We give them free recycle bins. Um, yeah, we don't give them free garbage cans, but the problem is garbage cans don't work on this specific spot just because there's a lot of critters and, like I say, and I'm not gonna do it for individual homes, just where there's a driveway with three or four people sharing it. That's where the, the litter problem is, 'cause what happens, it's the same driveways, they, you know, the garbage gets in there, it gets spewed over. We've all seen pictures of, of, you know, diapers and loose garbage going into the waters and DEQs contacted me, say, hey, Artie, what, you know, you got a problem down there? What's the solution? And I don't, I mean, if you guys wanna come up with another solution, that's fine. This is one that I've come up with and it costs twenty-four hundred bucks to keep our waterways cleaner. You know, I, I get what you're saying. Where, where do we start? Where do we stop? How much responsibility do we take as a board? I don't know. That's something that the board has to decide, not just me.
So this area that you're talking about putting these bins at has homeowners that majority or all are not there during the week?
Yes.
I mean, I understand what Christie's saying, but at the same time, if I go out of town and I'm gone for the week, I just don't put my garbage out and I put it out the next time.
Right, but.
But if this is the way of life of this area, I don't wanna see it a littered mess either.
I, I mean, I drove down there Saturday, I saw four or five spots where they already had ten, eleven bags out because, okay, they went someplace else for the rest of the weekend. And I'm sure there's a mess there this morning after the garbage company left.
And it was an extra day too.
So. I'm just trying to keep our township a little cleaner and neater.
It looks like we've discussed a couple of variables, one with put, do, doing a test run on them for a couple of them. So the whole shot.
So what if we do a couple and stage them in key areas and see if they're used, if they hold up? And then revisit it if it's working well?
I mean, there's.
If they're not being used, then we know not to.
There's two streets where, you know, I could put a couple on each street and.
Driveways should be.
Or driveways, yeah. You know, near the Mayberry and before.
Are these going to be locked?
No, they'll, they'll be open 'cause they're, people have to access them. I'm sure sometimes they'll get overfilled and the garbage, you know, bags will end up on top of them too, you know, but.
So the people coming off the island are gonna go to the first dumpster they see and it's gonna be a wired mesh container.
You know, I.
I don't know.
You know, it's, it's about the environment too.
Know it.
I mean, this is like the third or fourth meeting we've discussed garbage, so if it's this much of a problem, maybe our code enforcer, I'm not saying not to do this, but maybe this needs to be addressed as a whole in the township, not just this area.
Under our ordinance, we require garbage to be put out in a can. So you wanna drive around the whole garb- I, you know what? I throw my, my garbage out in a bag the morning of and because I don't, I'm too lazy to bring the can back. You wanna enforce that township-wide and tell everyone they have to put their garbage in a can?
No, I just wanna enforce people not throwing their garbage out in the open and all over the place.
In a can. Then you're, you're saying.
Like the pictures you showed us, that's, that's a problem. That's not just.
It becomes that because on one driveway, there'll be five, six houses using it, so they have a big pile of garbage there.
Well, if we're gonna enforce it, then yes, I would say make everyone put their garbage in a can. But if we're not gonna be able to enforce it, then we can't do that.
So I mean, that's one thing we have to look at is our garbage ordinance.
I could support like five of these, like a little quick test run.
Yeah.
If they work, if people are happy, it's, it's a low exposure, it's, we'll, we'll gauge a response. Maybe people be like, hey, can I get one of those? Hey, how much do those things cost? Maybe the solution will present itself in a month.
But we should, right, and with that, we should let the residents know that this is a test and if it works out, they have the option to buy them. I don't know.
It, it's not, it's, it's not a huge expense. I just.
Oh.
No, but it's opening up a whole can of worms because if you got this, then I want one.
It is.
You know?
I, I would totally get behind it.
My neighbor wants one.
Test run.
I, I hear ya. I hear ya, but like I said.
Can, can we do? Could we entertain a, a five? Could we throw six hundred bucks at it?
How many streets, Artie? What, what do we got done about?
I estimate.
Four, five street, uh, driveways, I mean driveways, not streets. They're not streets.
Well, I went down and every, every driveway that has three or, three mailboxes, I, I counted for one. Every mail, uh, street, private street, and this is the ones that they don't go down. You know, there's some, there's some street, private streets where they do service. For every street that has five mailboxes, I planned on two. And then I, I think.
You keep saying, let me just, the streets, you keep saying streets.
Well, they're driveways.
They're driveways.
They're driveways. And so every, every one I put two. And I, I think total it was about sixteen. I thought we should have a couple more if we're, if we're ordering them. So, yeah, it, it varies. It's, um.
They'll have.
You know, we, we, we probably have, you know, a dozen driveways down there. An, any driveway that just services one person? No.
No.
Like I say, the problem is, is when we have a driveway that, that services five, six people, the, for instance, the last one at the Four Winds, that's a bad one.
They have to bring their stuff out to the road.
Right.
They don't have a truck go down there.
And there's no spot and the, the, you've seen them.
Oh, yeah.
There'll, there'll be fifteen, twenty bags out there. And by the time the garbage guy gets there, there's litter spewed all over the place. It's blowing in the, in the bay, in the canals and everywhere. And we get complaints, rightly so. You tell them to put it in a can, they're not there to bring the can in, so now we have complaints of garbage cans blowing down the street, in the canals and, in the water. So do we force them to put a can in there and pay someone to bring the can back Monday after their garbage gets picked up? That's, is that realistic? You know? I don't think it is.
Do a test run of a couple of driveways.
What other form of resolution have you come up with and have you notified the residents over there?
Well, I notified a few of them that were looking at that. In fact, one of the residents came, found me the supplier.
Well, well, no, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the, the problem. What, what resolution have you put out prior to this to, to solve the problem?
I, I, I don't know of any other resolution myself. I mean, this is, they use these up north to keep the bears out.
Yep. Have the, have the residents been notified of the difficulty we're having with the trash being spread?
Social media.
From any other?
I mean, I haven't wrote a letter to every one or knocked on every door.
Well, maybe that should be the first step.
Uh, you wanna knock on every door?
No, notify everybody. I mean, you know, put it on the back of the water bill. I don't know, something.
Well, they don't get water down there, Mark.
Okay, well, that's even more, it'll even make them more to read, a chance to read it, right?
I, it's a problem. I understand that and I, I'm looking for solutions. I, you know.
A test run for a few of the, a few of the long driveways that have three or four people on them.
Okay.
Just do that.
I mean, is that a motion?
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's be specific. Five?
Five, five residents on it?
No, five, five bins.
Five bins?
Oh, five bins.
Spend six hundred bucks? Give it a try.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that your motion?
Yeah.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion of support to buy five bins at a hundred and twenty dollars apiece.
Six hundred bucks.
As a, as a, the motion should, as a test?
As, as a test run. On the viability of bins down at, at the end of private driveways on Bates Drive.
Yeah, it's down on Bates, yeah.
Yep. Is that the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, and we got support. All right, and it'll be a total of six hundred. Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose?
No.
You're, you're opposed? I'm opposed? You're opposed? I think we're opposed for a different reason. It still passes. Okay, motion passes. All right, next we have DPW, the Water, Drinking Water Revolving Fund Program. All right, next we have DPW, the Water, Drinking Water Revolving Fund Program. We have to send in some money for our bond. Principal is three hundred and six thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars and interest of three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-one cents. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the Drinking Water Revolving Fund Program payment of three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-one cents in interest, line five ninety-one nine nine five, and three hundred and six thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars for principal to five nine one nine ninety nine nine one. Support.
Yeah, motion support. Any discussion?
Is this the last payment?
I think we have another interest payment.
Yep, we're getting to the end of it. Okay, any more discussion?
What exactly is this again? Real quick.
Um, this isn't the refund. It's for, it's basically for the water plant.
Bonds for the water.
Bonds for the water.
Oh, bond, okay. That makes sense.
That was done like year two, well, twenty years ago.
I was gonna say sum it up in one or more words. Thanks, John.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Artie Brison?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Crystal Reed?
Yes.
Sandy Kupo?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Joanne Shurkey?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Yeah, motion passes. Next we have the sewer interceptor engineering fee. I'm gonna make a motion that we postpone it and I'll tell you why. IRA, for some reason, I'm not sure why, this is a project, even though it's in Clay, IRA's gonna fund half of it and we're gonna fund half of it. And they have problems with it. I have a meeting scheduled with them next week, Wednesday. And I'll find out what those issues are and then bring it back. I think we, you know, we should, as two townships, one project, be kinda united front on it. And like I say, we have a meeting scheduled next week, Wednesday. They only meet once a month, so they won't have it before them at the earliest, is their first meeting in October. So I will make a motion that we postpone this until after my meeting with IRA Township.
Support.
Motion to support. Any discussion?
How does this put us in any peril right now?
Well, it won't put us in any peril because without IRS tagging on, it's not gonna happen sooner. We do have a couple of weak spots in the interceptor, which, you know, I'd like to see addressed in next year or so. But as far as without IRS signing on and starting it, it's, it won't happen until, you know, they're on board also.
A question for John, or for you, on the assumptions. Down, it says here, permit fees to be paid by the St. Clair County DPW directly or as a reimbursable to OHM. Fees not included in this proposal. So they could charge them anything, right? Would they, would they?
The county?
Would we have to split? Would they come after us to split? Or just the county would pay it?
No, it's gonna be a set fee through the state of Michigan.
Yes.
And then it has to be paid by the county as their surrogate for IRA and Clay Township.
Even though it states in this thing that the fees are not included in this proposal?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
It's over and over.
Yeah, the state's gonna, you know, there's permitting fees.
Yeah, okay, okay.
That's just for the engineering, correct?
Right. That's just for the engineering. So we have a motion to postpone it in support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. All right, board member comments. Got any comments?
I just wanna welcome Brad and Bradley. Welcome, guys. I hope you enjoy your time here at Clay. I appreciate you coming.
Thank you very much.
Mark?
Brad and Brad, congratulations and thank you for coming on board. And thank you for sitting here during this this meeting and sticking till the end. Planning Commission, we approved the nine hundred square foot garage addition for five-three-zero-nine-point trumble. It's a commercial property. The next meeting is on September the twenty-fifth. Thank you all.
Okay, Joanne?
I would welcome also the two gentlemen to our fire department and Brad and Brad. And special thanks to Chief Rose and all the firefighters and the many other people that volunteered to help with that pancake breakfast. The residents on the island were very happy to see it come back on the island and they attended it very well. Over three hundred people, well over three hundred people. So it was good. And kudos to the department and to everybody that worked, even our supervisor.
I did. Sandy?
I just wanted to mention, we have a couple new businesses in the township. Edge Drum Works, I believe, is doing arts and band involvement with the school, I believe. And The Cove, which does eyeglasses and fashion. So if our township could support them, I'm sure they would appreciate that. And welcome Bradley and Brad Lee to the fire department.
Sandy, don't forget about the attrition over there at The Cove.
Yeah, I said eyeglasses.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. I don't know the attrition.
We also have On the Rocks, too, opened not too long ago, so.
So The Cove, I'm not hearing you well. The Cove is for eyeglasses? Okay.
They have glasses. I don't know, I don't know the logistics of that.
Glasses and fashion apparel.
Yeah, apparel and they have an attrition that comes in there a couple times a week. Very, very inexpensive, so.
Okay. Chris, you got PSA?
Just a quick one. Congratulations to the island, township residents and all the guests who attended a very successful weekend celebration with a turkey shoot and a boat parade and a candy parade, which included the Algonack High School marching band. Their appearance was certainly worthy and appreciated. And I wanted to thank the DDA, the scoreboard, the Truman Pipple Algonack High School football scoreboard looks spectacular and was well in need. And thank you very much.
I'd like to remind everyone to slow down, watch for buses and stay off your phones now that school has started. And also, today's September third, and this is your reminder that summer taxes are due Monday, September sixteenth.
I can tell everybody at that meeting, you're like.
We're getting this tomorrow.
This is your last reminder.
All right, yes, thank you. The, I was gonna mention, you know, drive slow, schools open. Watch for the little ones and Harson's Island, congratulations, Harson's Island Lions. They did a great turkey shoot and I know they always have problems. It's a lot of work for them to put that on and everyone's appreciative of it, for sure. And congratulations to Brad and Bradley and welcome aboard. And congratulations to the chief and the whole fire department for having a great pancake breakfast. It was well attended and well appreciated, so. All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Support.
Dilly-dilly. Thank you. Thanks for coming.